Mr. Cunningham.
I am here.
Ms. Ulrich?
Here.
Mrs. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Finbres?
Here.
Mr. Kazachik?
Here.
Mayor Romero?
Here. Item two.
invocation and appointments to boards committees and commissions.
The invocation will be given by Anna Marri, staff member to clerk's office.
Thank you, Mayor Romero. Let us pray. Thank you for bringing us to this meeting today, healthy and open minded. We ask for guidance for the mayor and council as they make decisions that will affect the lives of all Tucsonans. Help to make these decisions without bias or prejudice. It is important to remember to do what is best for the entire community. We know this is not an easy task, but we ask for guidance in that which will benefit most people. Amen.
Amen. Alrighty, so now we move on to item two C, presentations. There is a proclamation that we would like to read into the record. I'd like to proclaim April 25th through April 30th to be Medical Laboratory Professionals Week. Michael Simpson, CEO, and Michelle Del Guercio, Vice President of Sunquest Information Systems, are here to say a few words as soon as I read the proclamation. So, thank you, Mr. Simpson, for joining us today, and thank you for all of you do. Whereas the health of all Americans depends upon education and health. And whereas medical and treatment decisions often rely on timely and accurate test results. And whereas laboratory professionals, including pathologists, medical laboratory scientists, cytotechnologists, histotechnologists, medical laboratory technicians, phlebotomists, and histological technicians are highly trained specialists who perform and evaluate laboratory tests to detect and diagnose disease and monitor treatment. And whereas maintenance of these standards and progress towards improvement in the quality of laboratory services depends on the dedicated efforts of professional clinical laboratory science practitioners. And whereas the practice of modern medicine at the exacting standards we now enjoy would be impossible without the scientific tests performed daily in the medical laboratory. And whereas maintenance of these standards and progress towards improvement in the quality of laboratory services depends on the dedicated efforts of professional clinical laboratory science practitioners. And whereas Tucsonans are encouraged to recognize and celebrate medical laboratory professionals for their significant contributions to the health and wellness of our state. Now, therefore, I, Regina Romero, Mayor of the city of Tucson, Arizona, do hereby proclaim April 25th through April 30th, 2021, to be Medical Laboratory Professionals Week. And encourage all citizens of Tucson to recognize and support the vital service provided by the laboratory professionals for the benefit of all citizens. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cast the seal of the city of Tucson, Arizona, to be affixed this 25th day of April, 2021. Thank you so much, really appreciate you being here with us, and now more than ever. It is so important to recognize the hard work and dedication of laboratory professionals throughout the country that have assisted us with test results for this pandemic for more than a year. So, Mr. Simpson, thank you for joining us today. Would you like to say a couple of words?
Yes, if I may, and Ms. Mayor, truly appreciate you and the esteemed council members today. Thank you.
Alrighty, let me see. If anyone's on and is not muted, can you make sure that you mute yourself, please? Go ahead, Mr. Simpson. Oh, now you're muted.
No, it's the beauty of technology. Everyone's trying to mute. But Ms. Mayor, truly do appreciate your time and the esteemed council members today, and really would like to thank you on behalf of all of the laboratory medical professionals for taking the time for this proclamation. You know, it's a recognize the vital role that all of our medical laboratory professionals play here in Tucson, in Arizona, and around the world. Sunquest is a Tucson company, and we have been supporting the laboratory technology needs for laboratories around the world for more than 40 years from here in Tucson. And often we notice that the dedicated professionals in the laboratories go very unnoticed. But this has now absolutely changed, and as you said in the proclamation, they've moved from being behind the scenes to being the frontline heroes of both our active defense and offense in this fight against COVID-19. So truly, on behalf of all the medical professionals here in Tucson, around Arizona and the rest of the world, we would like to thank the mayor and the council for recognizing this very important week of Medical Laboratory Professionals Week, and really appreciate all of your time, and you know, we'll make sure that the laboratory professionals keep keeping Tucson and the rest of the world healthy and safe. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your hard work and dedication, and we count on your knowledge to keep us informed and keep us healthy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, we move on to item two D.
Appointments to boards committees and commissions.
City manager's communication number 103 dated April 20th is received into and made part of the record. Are there any personal appointments to be made at this time? I don't see any. We move on to item three.
Mayor and council reports summary of current events.
City manager's communication number 104 dated April 20th is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow members of the mayor and council to report on current events. There are to be current events of activities within the community, not position statements on policy issues. Does any council member have anything to report at this time? What I'll do is I'll move from, as I typically do, I'll move from Ward one through Ward six. So, council member Santa Cruz?
Mayor, I just wanted to, again, as stated earlier, to acknowledge the three guilty verdicts that were handed down in the murder trial of Derek Chauvin for the killing of George Floyd. That George Floyd still being here with his family would be justice, but that this is a step in what accountability can look like. And I believe that this is an outcome of sustained organizing and protesting and direct action, social, policy changes that create this type of social change. So I know that this is an important step in the path towards a more just world, and that we all have a lot of work ahead of us. And then, just lastly, that we are celebrating Earth Day on April 22nd, and I'm sure, Mayor, that you have more to say about that, but just, you know, thank you for everybody and their efforts in acknowledging these important issues.
Thank you, Councilmember Santa Cruz. We move on to, I believe, Councilmember Cunningham.
Your Honor, I've got some things to add this week. Usually, I've been COVID-related for a year, and I've been very, very focused on that, but there's a few things I wanted to add this week because it's time. First, I want to acknowledge a lot of the high school seniors who've gone back to school this week. Quite a few have opted in, and there are, we're getting graduation announcements, prom announcements, stuff like that. I hope they're doing it safely, and I encourage them to be allowed to try to get something out of their high school experience, but I also encourage them, that leads me into, to consider getting vaccinated. Now that everybody over 16 is eligible to be vaccinated, I really encourage them to consider that. We had an influx of appointments in the last couple of days, but there was a dip before that, and we were actually, we had available appointments. There are available appointments. If you want to get vaccinated and you sign up in the morning, you're usually within a week out of getting your first shot. So I really encourage anybody out there, understand, for those of you who don't want to do it, every single person that gets vaccinated in our community slows down mutations, slows down further spread. Definitely mitigates possible risks themselves. So you're doing, you're not only, don't do it just for you, do it for your friends and family, but also do it for our whole community. Please consider getting vaccinated. And I understand that even the folks that don't trust medicines, and hey, I'm one of those. I don't even like taking aspirin for a headache, but this is just too important. Our community's welfare and survival stem plant. The last announcement I want to make tonight is I want to give a Tucson welcome to Coach Tommy Lloyd. He comes from Gonzaga. He was born and raised in eastern Washington. He never left his hometown, pretty much his part of the town or state, a lot like someone I know. So I wish him the best of luck in fitting into Tucson. I wish him the best of luck to making our men's basketball program enjoy the same success that our women's basketball program has in the last year. So with that, that's my update. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. Councilmember Ulrich?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So on Saturday, April 24th, I wanted to invite folks to come out to Mansfield Park for a part of our Earth Day celebration there. Residents of the neighborhood surrounding Mansfield Park are invited to help plant trees and clean up litter starting at 9:00 a.m. Our ready, set rec van will be there at 10:00, so you can bring your family for a fun Earth Day event and celebration. We ask that you bring your mask, water, and a hat. And we also ask that folks register to volunteer ahead of time, so you can call the Ward three office at 791-4711 in order to do that. Also, next Monday, April 26th, from 5:00 to 6:30, want to invite Ward three constituents to join me at a Ward three meetup at Amphai Neighborhood Park, which is located at 510 East Navajo Road. We'll be observing COVID-19 precautions, and ask that you register in advance to be sure, also to wear a mask to the event. It'll be a great chance to ask questions of city department staff as well as our Ward three team. You can find the event on the Ward three council office Facebook page or call our office at 791-4711. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ulrich. Then we move on to Vice Mayor Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of updates. Arizona's second annual She-Tech Explorer Day is happening this Thursday, April 22nd, and it's taking place virtually this year. This is a one-day event that provides high school girls the opportunity to participate in STEM activities and connect with industry mentors to encourage them to consider STEM careers. So as you all can expect, I'm very excited about this, and we're expecting 150 high school girls to attend from across the region, so this is a really great thing, and shout out to Barbara and her department and everyone for making this happen. Our next Ward four town hall is Thursday, April 29th at 5:30 p.m., also taking place virtually. Everyone is welcome to join. The focus is going to be on the neighborhood of Mesquite Ranch this time. You can check out the Facebook page for more details on how to join. And last but not least, Arbor Day celebration happening on Friday, April 30th, and we'll be hosting a Planting for the Future, family-friendly event where we'll be planting 50 trees in Lincoln Regional Park. Participants should meet at the children's outdoor performance area outside of the Ward four office at 9:00 a.m. Please bring your mask, and we're partnering with Tucson Clean and Beautiful, Trees for Tucson, Tucson Parks, and Rec for this event, and I'm excited that the mayor will be joining us for this very special day. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Finbres?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Friday, April 2nd, I took part in the videotaping of the virtual ribbon cutting of the new safety quarters that have been installed at Valencia Old Nogales Highway and at Tucson Boulevard and Oracle Dracman to Maine. I worked with the Pasco-Yaki Nation and the T.O. Nation to secure grant funds so the two safety quarters could be constructed and installed. Thanks to Diane Alacon and Transportation, more grant funds were found for this project. I want to thank the Pasco-Yaki Tribal Nation Chairman, P. U. Copicio, and T.O. Nation's Chairman, Ned Norris Jr., for their support for this project, which will save lives. Also want to thank Transportation Director Diane Alacon and her staff for their work on these two quarters. On Saturday, April 24th, at 10:00 a.m., the Ward five council office and I are hosting a dedication of a tree in the April 5th on the Ward five courtyard in honor of Abe Marcus, former Ward five council aide who served the city from 1989 to 2010. Abe passed away this year. There are special people who come into our lives, will never leave us after they are gone. Abe Marcus did a lot for Ward five and for this community, and his work and legacy lives on. And also on May 3rd, just as a reminder, at 10:00 a.m. at the Quincy Douglas Neighborhood Center, 1575 East 36th Street, a dedication of the Buffalo Soldier Memorial Project will take place. This is the first voter-approved memorial honoring African-Americans who served in the United States Army from 1866 to 1948. I want to do a big shout out to Mike Rankin. On Wednesday, April 14th, the Arizona Supreme Court ruled that the city of Tucson could continue to hold their elections in odd-numbered years. The High Court's 5-1 ruling settled a legal battle between the city and the Arizona Legislature, which tried to force Tucson to hold its elections in even-numbered years. I want to congratulate our city attorney, Mike Rankin, and his staff for their victory. They're 20th in the battle with the Arizona Legislature on how the city of Tucson conducts their elections and wins. Also, the state of Arizona had to pay the city of Tucson for their legal costs for this latest case. On November 1st, 1960, the good citizens of the city of Tucson voted to change the charter to have our current election system, and thank to all the legal counsel that all the voters should continue to be adhered to. A good note, today is Lupita Robles's mother's, Inez Robles's birthday. She turned 93. Happy birthday, Inez. Please cumpleanos. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Finbres. Councilmember Kazachik, do you want to jump in here?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Alrighty, so yesterday was the fifth-year anniversary of the passing of my wonderful father, José Romero Noriega. And last year, I planted the first Tucson Million Trees Initiative tree in his honor in my neighborhood. And he is the one that instilled in me the love of open spaces, of wildlife, of wild animals, and it seems to me very befitting that, you know, that I can, that I can continue his legacy of his love of our environment. And so I'd like to invite all of you to the many mentioned Earth Day activities throughout the city. I invite you all to celebrate Earth Day and love of open space and wildlife and wild spaces every day of the year. I joined nine other mayors across Arizona to join together to celebrate Earth Day in Arizona. We are joining to celebrate a new statewide collaboration, celebrating the many ways Arizonans support Earth Day with a goal of inspiring residents to take action, not just for Earth Day, but every day of the year. As members of, in partnership with the Arizona State University's Sustainable Cities Network, Arizona mayors and communities are showing that there is power in unity and that we all have a role to play in ensuring our planet's health now and into the future. This past year has shown us the importance of regional collaboration between cities, and my fellow Arizona mayors have done so much. Without my fellow mayors throughout the country and here in Arizona, it would have been a much more difficult year to pass everything we had to pass through last year. But I did want to especially recognize Mayor Alexis Hermosillo from El Mirage, Flagstaff Mayor Paul Deasy, Fountain Hills Mayor, Mayor Jenny Dickey, Mesa Mayor John Giles, Oro Valley Mayor Joe Mayor Joe Winfield, Peoria Mayor Kathy Carlat, Phoenix Mayor K. Gallego, Sedona Mayor Sandy Moriarty, and Tempe Mayor Cory Woods for joining me in, you know, being a unified block of mayors in Arizona that want to see action in terms of protecting our environment and asking our state and federal governments to act and act boldly to stem climate change in our world. So with that, I appreciate all of my colleagues and all of my mayors throughout Arizona that joined us in, in creating this coalition of mayors that want to see change happen. With that, we're moving on to item four. Mr. Clerk?
City Manager's Report, Summary of Current Events.
City Manager's Communication Number 105, dated April 20th, is received and made part of the record. Time has been scheduled to allow the city manager to report on current events. Mr. Manager?
Mayor, no reports today. Thank you.
Thank you. Item five.
Liquor License Applications Report from City Manager.
City Manager's Communication Number 106, dated April 20th, is received and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, please read the liquor license agenda.
This evening's liquor license agenda, under item 5B, we have three requests for new license, two requests for person location transfer. Item 5B4, the applicant has requested it continues to this item, so it will not be considered this evening. The other four items, staff has indicated that the applicants are all in compliance with city requirements. An appropriate motion would be for items 5B1 through 3 and 5 to the State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval.
What is the motion, Vice Mayor?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just a question, is 5B4 the patio bar?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thanks.
Alrighty, if no other comments, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six.
Call to the audience.
At this time, the public is allowed to address the mayor and council on any issue, except for items. During this meeting, speakers are limited to three minute presentations. Call to the audience is scheduled to last for no more than 30 minutes. Pursuant to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, individual council members may ask the city manager to review the matter as that the matter be placed on a future agenda or respond to criticism made by speakers. However, the mayor and council may not discuss or take action on matters raised during call to the audience. So I'll be calling off names and remember you have three minutes. You have to say your name and if you live in the city, inside the city limits. And if you are muted, I believe you have to press star six to unmute. Alrighty, our first speaker is Kirk Olafland.
I don't see him on yet, Your Honor.
Alrighty, our next speaker is Abreza Ziger.
Yes, Your Honor.
My name is Abreza Ziger. I have been a resident of Arizona since 1960, lived in Tucson since 1983. I have lived at my current home in Ward One since 1998, and I am a citizen of the Sonoran Desert. Being a citizen of the Sonoran Desert means you understand that the desert is not only beautiful, but fragile. From the soil microorganisms and crusts that captures the smallest bit of moisture to the sawaros and the hawk that perches the top. For me, protecting the 60 acres of Arizona upland Sonoran Desert at 36th and LaToya started in 2005. The current proposed FLD Option B housing unit project is an ill fit for this property. It goes against the density that was promised at annexation. When you include the Intertunity Hills, Washington Nuance, and FEMA flood plan, the residence per acre calculation to determine the total number of houses that can be built at 36th and LaToya is misleading. It also misrepresents the intent of the annexation zoning condition that is low density, semi-rural. Option B FLD should never have been allowed past the rezoning special exemption pre-submital conference request. There seems there's been a systematically deliberate change over the last few years, 10 years in the UDC to marginalize neighborhoods, to make it easier for developers to build profit-driven, high-density, unaffordable housing. FLD Option B allows any residential zoning minimum lot size requirement to be ignored. If FLD Option B is not allowable under a current, under current UDC, we will add an amendment to enable your project to move forward. We were lucky. Someone from Ward One gave us a heads up more than a month ahead of the first neighborhood notification meeting letter from the developer. Maybe that should be the norm. No neighborhood likes to be blindsided by a developer, given two weeks to develop a response or even to look at the issues at hand. Thank you for your attention and your consideration in this matter.
Thank you, Abreza. Dale Warner?
Honorable?
Yes, Your Honor.
Honorable Mayor and Council, thank you. My name is Dale Warner. My family moved here in 1964 to help build Hughes Missile Plant here in Tucson. My wife and I moved into our West Side House just west of 36th and LaToya in January of 1980. We do call this home. This proposed project of an FLD using RAC has a bonus of side-by-side maximum density of 170 homes on just 18 acres. This increased traffic with deadlock was all in our homes. Now you heard from this, from our neighborhood stakeholders, with two neighborhood meetings, PDSD and Ward One requested from us. We are unified. Vote no on C98145C, 36th and LaToya, as it stands, with no changes. Make it a desert park. We agree with Ward One and stand strong with her. Lame Santa Cruz, that this density is too much. FOD and the use of RAC as a development tool has to be removed before this density is acceptable. Not hard to understand. Was this ever a proposed project to the people? No. Tell us, telling us that this will be from the top of PDSD, DOT, and from our Ward One office, does this mean that Mayor and Council still sees this as a done deal? PDSD recommendations are to make a deal. This will be. With this being over a $50 million developer's dream come true, this is a political stinking egg. How are you going to hatch this egg? Honorable Mayor and Council get no vote at all on zoning. It uses RAC, a FOD bonus tool itself, that is R1/R2 zoning densities, not MH1 zoning. PDSD says it will be. I asked Mayor and Council, is this a proposed project or is it a done deal with changes? We have replaced our 10,000 signed postcard program to a certified letter program to each member.
30 seconds.
At a pace of, at a pace of 20 to 40 letters a day to get your signatures on 10,000 letters, but still short of the 11,000 plus cars daily on LaToya. We understand the desire to develop this area, but not using an FOD project using RAC. You owe this, you own this individual vote and we will hold you to that. Vote no on C98145C, 36th and LaToya for the protection of our families, their safety, our rural lifestyle, and our desert environment. We need you to do this right.
Come to a conclusion, please.
We need you to do this right. Please leave this legacy for our kids and to save more water, make it a desert park. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Tuckett?
Yes, Your Honor.
Mr. Tuckett? If you are muted, press star six. Alrighty, we're going to have to move on to Sarah Mitchell Kim. Sarah Mitchell Kim. If you're muted, press star six.
I don't see her, Your Honor.
Alrighty, Steve Dolan?
Yes, Your Honor.
Mr. Steve Dolan?
Mr. Dolan, press star six to unmute.
Alrighty, we will have to move on to Francine Shumpuh, I think it is.
She's on, Your Honor.
Press star six, please, to unmute yourself.
She just muted herself, Your Honor.
Press star six to unmute yourself, please.
There you go.
Go ahead, Francine.
She may also need to mute, unmute her phone directly, Your Honor.
Francine, you might, I think you muted yourself again. Alrighty. Go ahead.
Okay, so you can hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, oh, hello, Mayor and Council. I am speaking in favor of the Reed Park Zoo Expansion Project as outlined in Option B and C. This specific location was selected by the city after careful review as being the best area to expand our zoo. I am convinced that we can reach a compromise and make this a win-win for everyone in the community, meaning a revamped Reed Park with new relocated Barnum Hill with water features, additional green space, and more trees. And while also proceed with the zoo expansion project pathway to Asia as outlined in the current and approved master plan. Our zoo is a unique place. It is a healing place and it is important for Tucson. Our zoo fulfills a need for our community. And with its expansion, it can reach its full potential while significantly improving our visitors' experience with the addition of new and even more endangered species. Let's not forget that the children are the future of our community. Their education of the outside world is essential for their understanding of conservation and appreciation of all living things. The zoo provides that and many more values for the children of Tucson. I appreciate this opportunity to voice my support for the zoo expansion project as outlined in Option B and C. Thank you. Hello.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate your voice. We're moving on to Karen Potter.
I don't show Karen on, Your Honor.
Okay. Stan Lindstedt? Stan Lindstedt?
Yes, can you?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. So one thing I really love about Tucsonans is that we're all in love with our fabulous city. We cherish our green spaces, especially our wonderful parks, and we likewise love our many museums, the botanical gardens, and especially the zoo, which hosts so many of Tucson's schoolchildren each year. This mar, these marvelous Tucson attractions and resources are not and should never be seen as competing with one another, but rather enhancing one another. For example, my favorite activity is to visit the zoo, followed by lunch in the park. This activity was made even better when the zoo expansion provides more animals, more habitats, and more learning experiences. And my lunch will be enhanced by seeing not only turtles and ducks in the big pond, but also viewing lions gazing over that pond, looking back at me. How cool is that? Rather than viewing the park and zoo in competition, let's focus on their interdependence. We can easily fill gaps and replace hills and ponds that the zoo is incorporating, but we can't begin to replace the good that the zoo does for the half million visitors annually. As a biologist, I understand the enormous service the zoo provides our community and the biological world as we confront habitat destruction and the inevitable species extinction. The broader sweep of the educational net and the deeper the involvement of our citizens to solve these problems, thus, as the zoo grows, it will attract even more of those future visitors and decision makers. Finally, hills and ponds within the park that did not even exist a century ago are now beloved, and it's with certainty that any creations we make now will also be loved in the future. How exciting to make the next pond or bunker hill for those future Tucsonans. In closing, I thank the mayor and council for your hard work and your dedication. You've made us all proud to be Tucsonans. And as you have in the past, I'm confident you'll focus on the future, the next hill, the next pond. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Lindstedt. Emma Blake?
Can you?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Ms. Blake.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Romero and council members. I'm speaking as a Tucson resident living in Ward Six near Reed Park. I have been closely following the debate over the zoo's proposed expansion into public green space in Reed Park. I completed the survey and I participated in the April 10th Dialogue Circle. I wish to make a statement today in favor of Option G, allowing the zoo to expand into their parking lot and the current therapeutic center building. This seems to me to be the best compromise, allowing the zoo a chance to grow, as other speakers have, have been pushing for, while protecting every square inch of precious green space we have in this extremely hot and getting hotter town. And it would even entail converting hardscape into something closer to green space. This was what my particular group at the April 10th meeting found consensus around, even though we began the discussion with positions that were at odds with one another. The other options for the zoo expansion in the park involve a net loss of green space, and that is just not acceptable. In fact, in light of the recent scientific study about the differences in average summertime temperatures in Tucson neighborhoods, and as temperatures rise in general each year, taking away any more green infrastructure would be a travesty. I don't have to tell you why green space matters. You wrote about it yourselves in the 2013 Plan Tucson documents. I quote, "Research has shown significant community benefits from green infrastructure, including improved air and water quality, decreased..." decreased flooding, urban heat island reduction, wildlife habitat, greater resilience to climate change, increased exercise and recreational opportunities, community cohesion, economic investment, reduced crime, psychological and spiritual renewal, and more attractive and comfortable public spaces. Significant economic benefits can be realized from an extensive and healthy tree canopy cover," end quote. I, I do recognize that there are some challenges entailed in expanding, in expanding in that direction, and some additional costs. But why should the public shoulder those costs by losing their green space just because on paper it would save the zoo money to take Barnum Hill and the South Duck Pond? As we think about other options for the zoo besides not expanding at all, which was my original position, or destroying the mature trees on the hill and the duck pond, which would be a true true betrayal of the public trust, since we never voted for that, please consider the only option that allows the zoo to expand in the park without doing so at the expense of Tucson residents' quality of life. That is option G. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Blake. Paul St. John? Paul St. John? Do you see him, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor.
Can you hear me?
Very low, but we can hear you. Mr. St. John?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. That's much better. Go ahead, Mr. St. John.
I'm sorry. I, uh, thank you for letting me speak. My name's Paul St. John. Uh, my wife and I have lived, uh, near Reed Park, uh, for over thirty years. Uh, we've visited, um, the park and the zoo with our kids while they were growing up. Now it's our grandkids while they're growing up, the zoo and the park, and we love them both. Uh, the zoo, I think, is a special asset to Tucson, not to take anything from the rest of the park. But the zoo, I, I volunteer at the zoo. I, uh, donate my time. And I, I do that because I think it's a tremendous opportunity, uh, with, to, um, to teach kids about the environment and the interdependence of animals and plants in the world. I was over at the zoo a couple of days ago. It's just a beautiful oasis. There are trees and bushes, lots of shade. A wonderful place. I love talking, uh, as a, as a volunteer at the zoo, I love talking to kids about, you know, what's amazing and unique about some of the animals there. I love the fact that the zoo, uh, very actively works to help sustain endangered species and to, um, uh, keep them going, uh, both in human care and in the wild. Um, this is a, a great thing for Tucson. It brings in, I think I remember that the year before the pandemic, it brought in, uh, five or six hundred thousand people came to visit the zoo. That's gotta have a great economic impact and a big plus. But the reason I go there is for talking to people about the animals, about the environment, and, um, what we all can do to make the, uh, the, the environment better in the world and to protect endangered species. Um, I favor expansion of the zoo. I won't speak to a particular plan, but I think that our zoo is a gem. Uh, it, uh, interacts with other top zoos around the country. And I think if we can expand the zoo, bring in additional animals, uh, additional endangered species, we can have a big impact, uh, in, in the world and, uh, maintain species. So thank you for letting me speak, um, and, uh, farewell.
Thank you so much, Mr. St. John. Gigi Brown? Gigi Brown?
Yes, Your Honor.
She's, she's on?
Yes, Your Honor.
Ms. Brown?
She may need to press star six, Your Honor.
Ms. Brown, you need to press star six in order to speak.
I did.
Okay, you, we can hear you now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
All right.
Uh, Gigi Brown. Turn off your, uh, computer if you have another.
Yeah, it's, uh, feedback.
Turn it off, please.
Yeah, okay. Now, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I'm gonna turn off my phone.
Ms. Brown? I think we lost her. Do we still have her, Roger?
No, it looks like she disconnected.
Oh, no. Um, Jane Conlin? Jane Conlin?
I don't see her, Your Honor.
Pam Funsen?
No, Your Honor.
Not here. Uh, how about Susan Jones?
Yes, Your Honor.
Susan?
Yes?
Yes, we can hear you. You have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
My name is Susan Jones. Um, I am a retired RN that, uh, uh, bought a house with my husband here a year ago. Uh, prior to that, we'd visited family over the years. I, um, have been involved with these community, uh, uh, community dialogue regarding the park and the zoo. Um, I live in the neighborhood of the zoo and park. And I was, uh, actually very alarmed to hear of the developments of, um, ideas to encroach into Reed Park. Because that was a, one of the primary reasons we bought our house close to here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Um, okay, sorry. Um, anyways, uh, let's see, so my point being, um, my, my bottom line is how is the zoo, um, expanding into the Reed Park benefiting the whole community? That's what I'm looking at, the whole community. It's benefiting maybe, you know, the zoo patrons and, um, yes, children, which is fantastic, you know? There's a lot of positive things about it, about zoo. But why take our public, uh, space away in order to, uh, you know, expand a zoo that's not accessible to people who are low income or just in, you know, uh, not interested? Why can't we keep the recreational and shade and beauty and nature which people so direly need in a city that keeps growing and growing? I'm a, I'm a former resident of some two different states of beautiful little charming places that have become so overdeveloped and there's not enough park space, open space. And even in your Tucson plan, under public health, um, you discuss, um, um, that, um, it reduces, you know, open space, uh, green spaces, uh, reduce, um, crime. And we know from studies that it, uh, it reduces mental illness. It, uh, people need that. There's too much concrete already. And to take more concrete, uh, or to make more park space away, um, is just seems counterintuitive to me. And, uh, it's a social justice issue as well. And, um, I hope you give it strong consideration to go for G. Each, each entity stays on its own turf. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And that come, we come to the conclusion of item six.
Can I talk?
Who is this?
G, Gigi Brown. I got disconnected.
Oh, okay, of course. Go ahead.
Okay, I wanna, um, say I'm a resident since nineteen seventy-five. Uh, I'm in Ward Six. Uh, I wanna talk about option G just because it's important, uh, for social justice. I believe taking away park space for low-income families, not everyone can afford the zoo. And I believe that it, it's a compassionate way to consider sustainable options in line with Tucson's mission statement. Uh, I also think that Plan G turns asphalt into quasi-green space, and it adds less concrete to the park, the all-over park. And we, we definitely need to think about the trees. I mean, this business of moving Barnum Hill to another hill and planting trees, those trees are seventy years old, and they're healthy, and they're beautiful. And we don't want to take away any tree anywhere in the park. And I believe we need to add more trees everywhere. But, um, there is noise options, so, uh, Plan G would be better for neighborhoods and all that. You know, families and people using the park. Uh, they wouldn't be disturbed so badly during any kind of construction, I think. I, I just believe that we need to keep as much of the park as we can and get rid of the asphalt. Because that's also what gives us so much heat. There's so many pluses about option G. I believe that, uh, in a, in a way, the zoo plan or master plan for the zoo is, um, kind of, well, it's not the master plan for the park. And it's not okay. It's just plain not okay. So obviously, I, um, I hope the zoo will take into consideration if they're going to have to stay there to not take away anything from the public space of the park. Okay, thanks for listening. I'm glad I got to talk.
Thank you so much. I'm glad you back, uh, got back on as well. Um, well, that, we come to the conclusion of our call to the audience, and now we move to item seven.
Consent agenda items A through M.
Reports from the city manager on the consent agenda are received and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read the consent agenda.
Your Honor, on this evening's consent agenda, item A is approval of minutes. Item B is an intergovernmental agreement amendment with Pasca Yaki Tribe for potable water service and long-term storage credits. Item C is a final plat S two zero dash zero five zero, eight eleven South Fourth Avenue, lots one through seven. Item D is a final plat S two zero dash zero six four, Moran Marketplace Phase Three, blocks one through six, common area A. Item E is a final plat S two zero zero six two Ralph LLC, lots one through three. Item F is a final plat S two zero zero six eight, Monta Vista, lots one through two. Item G has been continued at the request of staff. Item H is real property approving a ground lease agreement with Marshall Home for Men Incorporated for city-owned property located at the northwest corner of Forty-Fourth Street and South Sixteenth Avenue. Item I is an intergovernmental agreement with the Pima County Regional Flood Control District for the downtown links project. Item J is an intergovernmental agreement with the Tucson Unified School District for school resource officers. Item K is Tucson Code amending chapter seventeen relating to human relations to include a crown creating a respectful and open world for natural hair act. Item L is a labor agreement amendment with the Tucson Firefighters Association. Item M is a labor agreement extension with the Communication Workers of America. Item N is a memorandum of agreement with Northwest Fire District and Gold Ranch Fire District for regional assistance to firefighters grant program. That's the extent of the consent agenda, Your Honor. Appropriate motion would be to approve consent items A through N with the exception of G.
So moved.
There's a motion. You have a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, let's go to roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Finbres?
Aye.
Ms. Zulik?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mayor O'Meara?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
McSanta Cruz?
Aye.
So the items on the consent agenda are approved by a vote of seven zero. Item eight?
Public hearing amending Tucson Code, chapter twenty-seven, relating to the creation of new pre-annexation development agreement fees. Hearing ordinance number one one eight three one.
City manager's communication one one nine dated April twentieth is received and made part of the record. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on the proposed new pre-annexation and development agreement fee. This public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than one hour. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentation. Mr. Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
Yes, Your Honor, we have one request to speak. Mr. Ed Hindle.
Righty, Mr. Ed Hindle? Are you with us today?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead. You have five minutes.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor Romero and council, thank you for your time. Uh, my name is Ed Hindle. I'm a member of the Citizens Water Advisory Committee, but I'm just speaking for myself, not for the whole committee. So first of all, I'd like to thank you for your support for differential water rates. Thanks to you, uh, Tucson is now closer to a fair and equitable water policy than we've been in decades. And in that same vein, I hope you will support the new PATA fees proposed in Agenda Item Eight tonight. Uh, too often, the city of Tucson makes PATA's with properties we know will likely never annex, such as the Valencia property in Agenda Item Ten tonight. Property values increase drastically when we give them our water. But if they don't annex, we don't get additional state shared revenue in return. So we're giving away our most precious resource for nothing, and we need to stop. But if that's too much to ask, and we're just, and we're gonna continue making PATA's for a while longer, the least we can do in the meantime is impose a fee so that we get something back. Uh, right now, we're essentially subsidizing sprawl, which is bad for the environment, and it spreads our dwindling water supply thinner and thinner. Due to climate change, Arizona is in the midst of a massive drought, and recent studies show that we may need to reduce our Colorado River water usage by up to forty percent by twenty fifty. So to prepare and adapt to a hotter and drier world, we need to fight sprawl and stand up to the developers who make a fortune off of it. And this PATA fee would be a significant step in that direction, so I hope that you will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hindle. Really appreciate your voice and for you making time to be here. Any other speakers, Mr. Clerk?
That was the only request that we had, Your Honor.
Alrighty, thank you so much.
I move to close the public hearing.
There's a motion. Can I hear a second?
Second, Your Honor.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion pa- passes. This public hearing is closed. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read ordinance one one eight three one by number and title only.
Ordinance number one one eight three one relating to water, amending Tucson Code, section twenty-seven dash fifty-three to add a new pre-annexation and development agreement fee and setting an effective date.
What is the council's pleasure?
Oh.
Councilmember.
Probably my cue, correct?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, um, everybody who's weighed in on this issue. Um, the bottom line is that when it comes to our water infrastructure, and it becomes to our regional water source, resources, when it comes to, um, just about everything, when it comes to the equitable discussion about this entire process, and we'll talk about that probably in two items, um... in two items. Tucson really has been left holding the bag. Decisions made 30 years ago were not with foresight, were not with understanding long-term planning. Decisions made 30 years ago, and to no one's fault, at that time, people thought water was magic, and it would be, it would last forever. Over this last year, Lake Mead sustained a lengthy bottom elevation. Over 150 feet is gone from its average, and over 300 feet is gone from its max, and that's our main source of water in Tucson. From 1955 to 1995, the aquifer below us lost over 150 feet aggregately throughout the region. And you want to tell me that we need to be cavalier with our water policy? We have to monitor every single piece. Not only that, long-term, the adjustments that we make cost us outside of the city limits. We're not able to enforce rainwater ordinances outside the city limits. We're not able to enforce graywater ordinances outside the city limits. We're not able to enforce an idea of doing a recharge, retention, or reclamation project outside of the city limits when we're in charge of the net capacity of all the water that's being served in that service area. 125,000 acre-feet a year from the cap, along with whatever we self-generate. And over the past decade, since I joined this council, we've been mega-stores of water. We lead the country in understanding its importance, and that is the lifeblood of our city and region. So with that, I think this is a great step in the process of being responsible for our water. And I move, and we, I move that we pass and adopt ordinance. Where's my nomenclature? Aye. 11831.
All righty, motion and a second, any further discussion? I want to attach my comments to reflect those of Councilmember Cunningham. I couldn't set it any better. It is a step in the right direction, and I just want to make sure that I attach my support to the supports of Councilmember Cunningham. Any other discussion? Hearing none, let's go to roll call.
Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik.
Aye.
Ms. Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Romero.
Aye.
Mr. Feinbrus.
Aye.
Ms. Ulrich.
Aye.
All righty, ordinance 11831 passes by a vote of 7-0. Thank you all so much. Item nine?
Economic Development Notice of Intent to Enter Into a Tax-Sensitive Development Agreement with CIS Global, Resolution Number 23328.
City manager's communication number 120 dated April 20th is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read Resolution 23328 by number and title only.
Resolution Number 23328 relating to economic development approving a notice of intent to enter into a tax-sensitive development agreement with CIS Global Incorporated for expansion and relocation of its operations to 1601 West Commerce Court, Tucson, Arizona, making certain findings with respect to that agreement and adopting an independent economic analysis relating to the agreement.
What is the council's pleasure? So, again, there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those, oh, I think we have to go to roll call, right, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor.
All righty, so let's go.
Ms. Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham.
Aye, good luck, GSI, we're really honored to have you here and look forward to you expanding your business here in Tucson.
Ms. Ulrich.
Aye.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Feinbrus.
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik.
Aye.
Mayor Romero.
Aye.
Resolution 23328 passes by a vote of 7-0. Item 10?
Pre-annexation and development agreement with the owners of the Palo Verde Corridor property and the Valencia Corridor properties, Resolution Number 23325.
City manager's communication number 116 dated April 20th is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read Resolution 23325 by number and title only.
Resolution Number 23325 relating to pre-annexation and development agreements authorizing and approving the execution of a pre-annexation and development agreement between the city of Tucson and Honda Property Group, owner of parcel 132-20-1540, the Palo Verde Corridor property, Valencia Westover LLC, owner of parcel 138-25-593F, and 6500 Westover Avenue, owner of parcel 138-25-5910, collectively the Valencia Corridor properties.
What is the council's pleasure?
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 23325.
There's a motion and a second, and I see some hands going up. Councilmember Ulrich, and then Councilmember Kazachik.
I'm concerned about how these have been put forward here as a single resolution, because they seem quite different to me. The circumstances for each of these two seem so different. And to Councilmember Cunningham's point on item number eight, it seems, it just seems like we would want to really thoroughly evaluate the likelihood of annexation, because if I'm reading the resolution correctly, we'll issue a will-serv letter within five days of passing this. And once we've done that, I understand some clocks may start running, but that's another concern I have, that we're moving into a will-serv letter without further assurances of annexation. And so, and these are both outside the boundaries of the service area that we just affirmed two weeks ago. So this is probably a reflection of the fact that I've been gone from the table for quite some time, so I hope Mayor and colleagues, this is not intended to, I just have a lot of questions in my mind. So I'd like to hear from Tim and our staff, the rationale for going outside the bounds of our map for each of these two distinct circumstances. And again, it seems to me that Irvington one is very unique from the Valencia one.
Mayor, I would like to have Chris Avery, I know he's been working with the staff on that, so Councilmember Ulrich, if you're okay, I'd like to have Chris. Chris?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, I'm Chris Avery from the city attorney's office, and I work on annexation as well as water issues for the city. The reason that these two agreements are together, Councilmember Ulrich, is because the property owner is essentially the same. And so, we were approached by the Larson Baker Group in, with respect to water service at the parcel at Valencia and Westover. And we are, normally, we have a policy in that area of providing water service upon annexation.
Yeah.
The parcel at Westover and Cardinal cannot be annexed because there's an intervening section of the Tona Autumn Nation that runs north between the city limits and this parcel. In essence, the only parcel between this property and the city limits is the Tona Autumn Reservation. So we tried to come up with some ideas for whether we could strike a bargain, left the city in essentially the same position that it would be if we were able to annex this parcel. And the way we're able to do that is to identify another piece of property owned by the same owner, essentially the Larson Baker Group, in an area where the city has long attempted to annex at Palo Verde and I-10. So essentially, what we're doing here is a three-way agreement where we're providing water to a parcel that we can't annex in return for annexing a parcel to which we already provide water. And that's the essential structure of this deal.
Thank you.
So that's how it works. It's, it's not something that we've done in the past. I've worked on annexation for, direct, I've worked on annexation directly for about 12 years now. I've worked on annexation indirectly for about 20 years. We've never encountered a situation like this before.
Yeah.
It gets unlikely to repeat itself very often, but it is an opportunity to provide the city with essentially the same economic development opportunities that we would have absent an unannexable strip of tribal trust land that runs between these properties on Valencia.
Yeah, and again, I, boy, when I look at the Valencia map, what concerns me is we're creating a tiny island. Well, maybe I'm not understanding what water service we're providing in that area already, because it seems surrounded by residential developments. Are we serving anything to the west of that Tito property?
Yes, we provide almost all of the water service in that area. In fact, we provide water to two sides of this parcel at the moment, it's just that they don't meet the infill criteria of the three-sided rule that's established in the water service policy.
Okay.
But virtually, if you look at the map, there is a temporarily vacant parcel that is in the process of being subdivided immediately to the west, and it's quite likely that all of this, in time, not necessarily in the timeline contemplated by this agreement, but over the next years, it's possible that due to the operation of the water service policy, all of this will become infill and served by Tucson Water. So this is not an area out, at the outer fringes of Tucson Water Service Area, this is an area where Tucson Water provides service to, by my guess, roughly hundreds, if not thousands, of parcels in the relatively immediate vicinity of this parcel already.
Okay, so on the water service area map, it's kind of a splotchy area where we're kind of trying to fill in some more green, but it's already kind of an expansion area, if you will, contemplated on the map?
Yes, I think it's quite certain that this property, but for the presence of the Tona Autumn tribal trust land that runs north from the, what we think of as the body of the reservation, that much of this property would already have been annexed into the city.
Okay, okay, that's very helpful, I guess, and in the future, I will ask for some clarification on where these parcels are on the water service area map. It's helpful to see the city limits, but it's not quite as relevant as the water service area map in this deliberation, so I appreciate that. Okay.
Both of these areas contemplated in this agreement, both the area near Valencia and Westover, Valencia and Cardinal, and the Palo Verde Corridor are areas that have substantial water service from the city of Tucson already, despite being outside the city limits in both cases. So we'll be able to annex, if this agreement is approved by the mayor and council, we'll be able to annex or will have an opportunity to annex parcels near the Palo Verde and I-10 corridor that the city has long attempted to annex.
Yeah.
In return for providing water to an area that we just can't because of that intervening parcel.
Yeah. I'm sorry to take up so much time, Madam Mayor, could I ask one more follow-up question?
No, please, please take your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is a complex issue, and I talk slowly, so I have to bear some responsibility for that.
With regard to how the PATA agreement is stated, can you talk to me a bit more about the sequencing? And it seems to me, again, we approve this, and boom, they get, within five days, a will-serv letter, which, you know, there you go, even, and they have to make every effort to assist with annexation. And believe me, Larson Baker is a great company, we've partnered with them a lot in Ward 3, I have real appreciation and respect. At the same time, we need to be smart about how we structure these agreements. Is there no way that we can either sequence the events differently or state the annexation expectation more strongly in the PATA so that it, I don't know, is there, or could we, could we annex first and then provide the will-serv letter?
We've certainly attempted that. The issue is that the timeline for development of the Valencia property is a short timeline, and the timeline for annexing is a longer timeline. So what this agreement does is, is put the language in the agreement that you've referenced about cooperation. It also places a continuing PATA obligation on that parcel that is in perpetuity. So obviously, we're going to try to annex, and we think we've got, based on our past history with annexation, we've got parcels in the area and valuations in the area that would make us enthusiastic about annexation. But even if we're unable to annex immediately, we have a PATA now on this property at the Palo Verde Corridor, that is an important asset in the future. Again, we, we, you know, I hope I'm not going too far out of school here, but we were very close to completing some annexations north of here in the recent past. And many years ago, about 20 years ago, the city temporarily annexed the whole Butterfield complex to the east of the Palo Verde Corridor, but that annexation was overturned in a court battle with some slight deficiencies in the signatures and the petitions at the time. So this, this parcel at Palo Verde and I-10 is in an area that the city has long attempted to annex, and if you look at the map of the city, it makes a lot of sense for the city to continue its annexation efforts in this area. So even if a worst-case scenario happens here, we have a valuable asset for annexation in the future at Palo Verde and I-10 that we would not have with absent this agreement.
Okay, that's helpful, Chris, thank you.
So if, and as I've said before, if this particular effort were simple and easy, we would have accomplished it a long time ago. This is a creative and difficult process, and it's complex, but we think we've done as well as we can in crafting an agreement that reflects the interests of the developer and the city, and we're presenting it to you for consideration.
Yeah, and I, I think that what I heard at the council table two weeks ago, as you know, Chris, is a very firm embracing of our water service area map and policy, no ifs, ands, or buts, highest priority, in fact. Annexation, yes, economic development, yes, but water is our most precious resource, and there's a firm commitment, and that's, I just want to make sure that, that the annexation goal isn't causing any slippage in our commitment to the water service area map and policy. And that's why this concerns me, and in fact, I, just the materials, I would have expected bells, whistles, and flags all over it to say, hey, this is kind of an exception to what we've been doing, it's the first time we've ever done this. And so in the future, I just want to keep talking with Mayor and Council and you all about how we can continue to consistently secure that policy and map, and make sure if we're making an exception, it ought to be kind of a big deal, something that's not just, you know, a PATA put on the agenda. I would expect that we would really have some deliberation further. Now, I may have missed a whole lot, I'm back new to the table, so I'm going to acknowledge that as well. Thanks.
Yeah, I'll just say really quickly, you know, I've worked on a lot of really interesting and wonderful projects in the course of my career at the city, I'm really proud of them, including, you know, recently being able to work at the Tucson Convention Center Vaccine Clinic, which has been a highlight. But one of the things I'm most proud, probably the thing I'm most proud of, is involvement in the water service policy.
Me too.
And, and, yes, this is an exception to the water service policy, but the general intent of the water service policy is to protect the water interests of the city by ensuring that not, not, it's not a zero-growth policy.
No.
It is a policy that is intended to use the water assets of the city to promote the interests of the city. And in this case, what we're doing is essentially accomplishing annexation by operation of this agreement that would be consistent with the water service policy if we were able to actually annex this Valencia parcel. We just can't do it. And so it it is it is an exception to the water service policy, but it's consistent with the general goal of the water service policy, which is to use the 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 water asset that the city owns in order to further its economic interests.
Uh and I would state the policy priority quite differently. It is all about water stewardship, quite frankly, and and um and and so that's where I think we just want, maybe we can have a study session. Really, we ought to reflect more deeply and provide more clarity because um you know, I I I I think that there 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 are um ways of stating the intent of the policy that could lead it to be driven solely by annexation and economic development considerations versus the stewardship piece being the central piece. So anyway, I I I but Chris, I I I think I understand the points you've made and I appreciate it very much.
You know, and I want to expand on Karen's points in terms of um adding bells and whistles and being able to uh bring this item for consideration, really, uh for mayor and council to consider um taking this particular very different, unique steps that we're taking tonight. So I I I agree that we would have uh appreciated um some initial discussion from mayor and council to be able to uh give direction in on this, you know, we just reaffirmed our water policy about two weeks ago and uh it's something that we value, you know. I worked with you, Chris, um and some of us on the council to create this policy because of the stewardship that we wanted to create. Um because of the stated intentions, right, that council member Cunningham talked about in the previous item. Uh what I want to ask, and then I'll I'll toss it over to council member Kusacik and then council member Cunningham, is um the pre-annexation development agreement does have this annexation cooperation language. Is there a timeline attached to um to this PATA in order to be able to advance
So so we we don't have a timeline attached, but I know that Mike Chakowski from Economic Initiatives Office is in the process of trying to set those meetings up immediately as soon as this agreement is accept, if this agreement is to be accepted, we'll set those meetings up immediately. Um obviously, if the agreement is rejected, then 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 we won't be able to host them, but I'm confident that 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 office will be on this promptly and will be working on it immediately as soon as the council votes yes or no on this agreement in front of it today.
So um I also want to reiterate what council member Ullick said about Larson Baker being a um, you know, local company that has, you know, cooperated in so many different good things for our city, uh creating um economic development opportunities. Um I did touch base with Mr. George Larson about his commitment uh to advancing and helping uh with the Palo Verde um annexation of the other properties. Of course, I mean, he doesn't own the responsibility and cannot ultimately cannot uh make the decision for the property owner surrounding the Palo Verde and Irvington. But um there is a commitment there to do the right thing by the city of Tucson. I mean, it really is like point three acres separated, the Palo Verde and Irvington land separated from city of Tucson limits and surrounding it is a lot of area that makes sense to bring into the city of Tucson. So um I guess I wanted to make sure that, you know, that we had into the record that the personal commitment of Mr. George Larson to helping us annex this area um is there and it's also on the language of the PATA. But I I'll have council member Kusacik jump in and then council member Cunningham and then I'll I'll add to the conversation.
Okay, thanks. Um Karen, it's not because you were gone. This is um you didn't miss this because this is the first time this has been proposed. And um I also would reiterate what both the mayor and Karen said about Larson Baker. We've all done great work with him. I've heard that he is the owner and that he isn't the owner. Does he own this parcel at Valencia or not?
Uh the parcel at Valencia and Westover is a Larson Baker parcel and the parcel with that we have the annexation agreement with at Palo Verde and Irvington is also a Larson Baker parcel.
Okay. To me, that's to me, that's almost irrelevant. I mean, I just wanted a clarification. The reason I say it's irrelevant is because I could own a parcel out west of the Tucson Mountain foothills and then one in our service area and try and do this deal the same way and it wouldn't fly with me. But let me let me ask a couple of questions though. Um in section 5.1, when you're talking about sanitation services, it references the offset of initial costs of our rental tax? We don't have a rental tax. What is that referencing?
Um so it it's a commercial lease tax.
So it says, in order to offset the initial additional costs of the city's rental tax incurred by HPZ, HPG, um we're going to pay a portion of their um their trash delivery fees.
Yeah, and I when I suck, we do have a commercial lease tax and so I I I could have been more precise with that language and should have been.
So, all right, so, all right. So explain what has to hap- I'm not trying to play dumb with you, Chris. Explain what has to happen for the Valencia parcel to be annexed. I mean, you can't jump over uh the tribal land.
Yeah, so because of the of the tribal land, that's essentially a peninsula that runs uh north from um this area almost to Drexel, in order to annex the gotta wave my hands here. Um in order to annex the parcel, we'd have to, I mean, let me get my light on. Sorry about that. It is an economically energy-efficient office. Uh in order in order to uh annex into the uh Valencia and Westover site, we'd essentially have to come north and then back south again through a large number of already developed parcels, many of them residential. And um those annexations prove to be very difficult.
So this isn't really a PATA. You know, we're giving water and using the Honda property as trade. You know, the water is a development incentive, not an annexation enticement in this case. Is that fair?
Well, in this case, we're using the the water that we're providing it, uh would be that we would provide at Valencia and and Westover. Uh we're providing uh water to that property in return for being able to annex a parcel that already has water service.
But aren't they two very different calculations? The Valencia wants our water service but can't annex, but Honda is ready to annex on the other side of town and they're and they're already getting water service. They're two very different calculations.
Right, but Honda doesn't have to annex, so.
Well, as he indicated an interest in annexing, it seems to me that that would be a wonderful candidate for annex so you don't have to pay the differential water rate. I foresee the merging of these two items on the same transaction is be is making a whole lot of sense.
So I know that we've attempted to annex in the area of Palo Verde and Irvington in the past and haven't been successful. In this particular case, we would have a parcel now at Palo Verde and Irvington in the cooperation of other parcels at Palo Verde and Irvington in order to effectuate an annexation that we've been unable to to do before. So essentially, the way I see it is we're we have an this by virtue of this agreement, we agree to provide a a very modest amount of water service to a parcel that we cannot annex. In return, we would obtain annexation of a more economically important parcel that we already provide water service to and that would annex only if they decided it was in their best interests.
Well, it feels as though they're leveraging their interest in the Valencia property as a hook to agreeing to annex on the other one. And our water service policy doesn't include land and water swaps like that. So why are we being asked to consider these as two separate transactions? Either provide water to Valencia, yes or no, or annex to Honda, yes or no?
Because under the water service policy, that would not go to mayor and council for approval if a property meets the criteria. Under the water service policy, that they um the answer would be no for the Valencia and Cardinal parcel.
Correct.
So we need to come to mayor and council in order to, for this agreement to work. It's not a matter of an exception to the water service policy. The water, the the water service policy doesn't cover this.
Then it is an exception to the water service policy because it doesn't cover it.
Right, uh the so when you go, when you go to the mayor and council, then you're getting direction from the mayor and council to to make this agreement.
Okay.
It's not like it's not a mini water service policy.
Okay, it feels to be consistent with our water service policy, it's more realistic picture to look at these as two separate transactions. And if the Honda property doesn't want to annex, they might after we have put our differential water rates in. But to have to allow them to leverage ownership in a piece of property on the other side of town as a hook to annex doesn't feel consistent at all to me with our water service policy. And I want to protect the interest, the integrity of our water service area policy. So I'll keep listening, but right now it doesn't feel right in my gut.
I understand and that the reason that that we understand that this is a novel approach and that's precisely why we're bringing it to mayor and council. You're the policymakers and you get to decide what you want to do in this case. We this is the most creative option that we could think of um in in with respect to the fact situation that we were presented with here.
So um so Chris, how do we make sure that this does not become precedent? I think that one of the issues that some community members and and some colleagues are concerned about this becoming precedent uh and protecting our our water service um area policy and the map. So how do we make sure protecting ourselves and our our process?
So let me answer that quickly. I think first of all, we're not asking for an amendment to the water service policy so that in the future, any agreement like this would basically get staff approval and that and then water service would be granted and it would never come to the mayor and council. So we're not, we're not amending the water service policy. We're not changing the water service policy in any respect here. In addition, I think the facts of this particular situation are so rare that it's unlikely to reoccur. For one, the presence of the the intervening strip of Tonal Odom reservation land that makes an annexation essentially impossible is a unique factor. And also um the fact that you have a developer who has um both a parcel that's on the other side of this Tonal Odom reservation. The reason that the the city is annexed all the way to the Tonal Odom reservation on the east side is because this same developer annexed into the city about 10 or 12 years ago. And they also have a parcel that the city has long attempted to annex in the past. So I've worked on annexations as the the legal advisor for 14 years. I worked in water trying to do uh some water and annexation deals in the mid 2000s. So I've been working on this for 17, 18, 19 years now. This is the first time this situation has arisen. So I don't see it as the um you know, the camel's nose under the tent kind of a situation. I see this more as a one-off. I don't see it as, you know, the slippery slope. I I think this is a one-off, maybe not unique, but an extremely rare situation that's unlikely to recur frequently in the future. And if it does occur in the future, the mayor and council will have the opportunity to look at the facts of each such transaction and evaluate them.
Alrighty, uh but on the Valencia property, the there's two sides around the property that are already being served with Tucson Water?
I think it's quite likely that in the future, just by operation of the Tucson Water Service Policy, the Valencia and Westover parcel would be able to obtain service in time with the the operation of the three-sides rule. Um and the large, the the one side that they don't have is the large vacant parcel to the me at west. Uh if that parcel were to um um obtain water service, then the Valencia and Westover parcel would be able to obtain water service and the city would not obtain any annexation or economic development as a consequence and would be find itself with this obligation.
Okay, um council member Cunningham?
All right, so I wrestled with this one quite a bit and I'm not I'm kind of a little half and half. I'm I'm kind of thinking, you know, we probably should have done a study session and delay it. Or we can try to rush it through tonight. I don't know where the developer is or whatever and I don't really want to make a lot of waves, but let's let's go over a few things. Number one, and I talked to you guys last week and I thought you guys had given all the information to all of my colleagues. So this is what I how I understand it. The first thing that I understand is the Valencia parcel is a two-sided parcel that would get water service anyway if the third parcel, the third side, which is owned by TUSD and may get sold, uh it would be come into the water service area. So that's the first thing I understand. Am I wrong? Or is that, why hasn't that just been said?
Well, because it it's quite likely that the Valencia parcel would um be able to obtain water service if it if the owners of that parcel decide to configure their lots appropriately. But I don't know whether they will do that and I don't know what the timeline is for that. I do know uh that the the Larson Baker interests are motivated to try to make this deal happen quickly and specifically requested that we place this on the council agenda at this meeting because they have some interest on the parcel that expire if we wait too long. Obviously, we'd like a little more time.
All about this, so I don't I I don't, I don't know that dynamic. The second piece is, and this is probably the part that was really important to me. Um the Honda property, which is D DDSA, is with a sign out there as DDSA. It's next door to a Camping World owned by the Cambridge Investment Group One. And then if you cross Camping World, you hit Circle K. The distance from the city limits to the northern boundary of the DDSA site is 743 feet. So we have 743 feet to make up. Now, as you all know, there's an entire area. It's a hole in Tucson that has not been annexed. Industrial hole. It's not been annexed for the last 40 years. It's one of the beams of my existence as far as I'm concerned. So I'm actually excited about the opportunity to annex the Honda piece. So when you guys talked to me about this, I was under the impression that A, the Valencia parcel eventually was going to get water anyway. And B, we've been trying to get this other parcel in the city for a long time and we really don't have a lot of recourse to do it because they already get their cake and eat it too. And being the climate that we were in with the uh you know, with 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 the water policy and with all the discussion that we're having, I was kind of like half and half. So I I just want to try to understand. Um number one, I'm under the assumption that Mr. C, Mike Mike C, has already started talking to the Cambridge Group, Circle K, and the group behind Circle K. Is that correct? Or started the process to talk to him?
Yeah, and I'm going to let Mike Chakowski weigh in on this. I also saw that the attorney for Larson Baker has raised his hand and so I'd like to let them have the opportunity to respond to these questions.
All right, go ahead.
Uh honorable mayor, members of the council, Chris, you want me to go first? Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Go ahead, Rory.
Yeah, um uh council member Cunningham, I just wanted to address a couple of the points you brought up. Um the the Valencia parcel currently has two sides that are served by Tucson Water. One side is an obligated parcel, meaning that it it can go get a water meter at any point. So three sides of this parcel are surrounded by prop or surrounded by are served essentially by Tucson Water. The parcel to the south, Chris was saying it's to the west, but it's actually to the south, is owned by TUSD. south, is owned by TUSD, and our understanding is that it could be developed soon. So Councilmember Cunningham, you're exactly right that this is a parcel that likely will get water service very soon. I also want to point out that the DeCencines are the, they've been the prior owner of the property. Larson Baker's in contract with them, so just want to make that clarification. But the DeCencines actually sold the adjacent property, which is the Walmart Neighborhood Market, to Walmart in 2005, and they all contemplated this to be one unified development. So I think even under your current water service policy, this parcel should be an obligated area. So I think there's a lot there that points exactly what your point is, is that this is a parcel that's going to get water, we think relatively quickly. We just entered into this PATA because we thought it was the, or wanted to enter into this PATA because we thought it was the most expedient process and that it would get us there sooner. And if, as you pointed out, I think there's a great benefit for the Palo Verde parcel to be essentially ready to annex in, and there's a good opportunity for that to happen.
All right, my next part is, is that Valencia Road divides the two Tonon Odom parcels. Is that Tonon Odom parcel contiguous, or are we allowed to annex the easement in the road?
Councilmember Cunningham, as we know from work that we've done on the Pasco Yaki Reservation, it's, I don't know the status of Valencia Road and whether the appropriate easements and permissions.
That's trust land, right? It's not contiguous reservation land, so.
It is tribal trust land as part of the Tonon Odom Reservation.
Oh, it is part of the reservation. Never mind.
Yes.
I thought they had acquired those parcels as part of their settlement, so that would have meant they had acquired the parcels, not, my fault. Okay, so I missed that one. I was under the impression that we might be able to thread the needle there, but we can't. Look, I'm, this is a tough one, man. You guys, we should have had a study session about this if we're going to go off script. Rory, can you guys wait a couple of weeks or what?
So Councilmember Cunningham, maybe it's the right thing to do to wait so that Mike and Chris can give, you know, a briefing to each of the council colleagues so that these questions about precedent and concerns that my colleague might have can be taken care of. Councilmember Santa Cruz has her hand up, and then Councilmember Kozaczek.
Thank you, mayor. I was going to say the same thing. I, you know, again, this is on news to me. We were briefed. I wasn't aware that this was moving a lot faster because I hadn't had a chance, you know, to talk to you or anybody else to get some background and get some more context on it. So from hearing my colleagues right now, it sounds like we're not ready to move forward with it, and maybe we should have a study session for our meeting next month to, you know, to look at it more in depth.
Thank you, Councilmember Santa Cruz. Councilmember Kozaczek?
So Chris and Rory, I agree that this is, in the Valencia case, it's small amounts of water, and it is likely to be annexed at some point, but it's not a PATA. This is a pre-development agreement, not a pre-annexation agreement, and we need to stop mixing those terms because they're two very different things. And I would really, and if we're going to delay it, that's fine, but when it comes back, they really ought to come back as two separate items and not try and, you know, mix metaphors by saying, well, we'll land swap from one side of this city to the other just because it's the same owner, and it might achieve an overall general goal. But I think, I don't think, I know there's a lot of sensitivity to maintaining the integrity of the water service policy that we have in place, even if we're achieving general goals. So they're two different, in my world, if I were to vote now, I'd go no, because they're two separate transactions trying to achieve two different things. And if the Honda property wants to annex in, which is what you said they want to do anyway, then let them annex. Come on in, we'd love to have you. But don't try and leverage that action with us giving water service to something else on the other side of town that's not ready for it. That's where I'm at tonight, anyway.
So I would recommend that in order for there to be much more informed decision and be able to make sure that question, all the questions are answered for my colleagues on the council, I would say that we should delay this item and not have the vote tonight because there's legitimate concerns, I believe.
Honorable mayor, this is Rory. I'm sorry to interrupt. We do have a user, it's a physical therapy clinic that's, we're on a tight timeframe, and we will lose them if we don't have a resolution tonight, so.
Rory, you might lose the council if we were to move tonight.
Understand, understand.
So, colleagues, I would suggest that we continue this item so that you all have the opportunity to ask any questions, and I would be more than happy to delay it for the first meeting in May. If there's any continued input and feedback, or if any of you want to have a study session item on it, I'm more than open for that as well. But in the meantime, Mr. Avery, what's the process that we need to take so that we continue this item for next meeting?
I think the motion maker should just withdraw.
Yeah, there is a motion, and in a second, I would rely on the makers of those motions to either withdraw their motions or to make a substitute motion as per guidance from the city clerk.
I would draw my second.
Remember, Fimbres, I believe you did your motion. Would you like to withdraw the motion and delay until the first meeting in May?
If that's what the council wants to do, my colleagues want to do, that's fine. We can do that to make sure. But I'm concerned about the timeframe that Rory has mentioned and Larson. I hope that it doesn't affect their deal.
Okay. So if you withdraw your motion and the second, the second motion maker withdraws, then we, I think we need to continue for the first meeting in May. And use that time, Chris and Mike Chikowski, to, you know, to make yourselves available to answer any questions, any concerns from my colleagues on the council. Correct?
Understood.
All righty, thank you so much, Chris. Really appreciate it. Thank you, Rory, for being.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
For your questions on this item and your deliberation. So with that, Mr. Clerk, we are continuing item 10, which is Resolution 23325.
Yes, Your Honor.
All righty, thank you so much. We move on to item 11.
Boards, Committees, and Commissions, Appointment to the Civil Service Commission, Resolution Number 23329.
City Manager's Communication Number 121, dated April 20th, is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read Resolution 23329 by number and title only.
Resolution Number 23329 relating to the Civil Service Commission appointing Eddie Goltbaum-Rios as the Civil Service Commissioner of the City of Tucson to fill the vacancy created by the expiration of the term of Diana Jimenez-John on July 9, 2020, and to serve a term commencing April 21, 2021, and expiring on April 20, 2027, fixing annual compensation and declaring an emergency.
What is the council's pleasure?
Madam Mayor, I move to pass the adopted Resolution 23325.
I believe it's 233.
I'm sorry, sorry. I got the wrong one. I tried to pull a fast one, Madam Mayor. Pass the adopted 23329, sorry.
You're just trying to sneak that in, Mr. Fimbres.
You guys are awake.
So there's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's go to roll call.
Mayor O'Meara.
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres.
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Ms. Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Ms. Ullick.
Aye.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Kozaczek.
Aye.
Resolution 23329 passes by a vote of 7-0. Item 12.
Adjournment.
Council will stand adjourned. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be on Tuesday, May 4, 2021, at 5:30 p.m. Thank you all so much. Really appreciate your thoughtfulness, and have a wonderful rest of your week. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.